Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, we only have one change, and that's item 8O Parks and Recreation and Open Space. This is the Paradise Hills Little League Construction to be deferred to a future meeting, and a vote is required for the change to this agenda.
Okay, thank you. I will move to approve that change in the agenda. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chair Casada. All in favor of deferring 8O, please raise your hand. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes ma'am, Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti.
Aye.
Yes ma'am.
We are losing audio for this meeting, so we are going to have to break for a brief recess. And so get it back online, okay?
Okay, thank you. And we are back. Thank you so much for hanging in there, and I think I better just go ahead and proclaim this building. Next on our agenda is proclamations, and so I have a very special proclamation of the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners to honor our new building. Whereas public buildings are bedrocks of our communities and should reflect intention, innovation, and values while inspiring creativity, collaboration, and inclusivity; and whereas this week marks the culmination of a 13-year journey to manifest and reflect such values and aspirations with the opening of Bernalillo County at El Verado Square; and whereas county residents will now be well-served in one convenient location by the Assessor, County Clerk, Planning and Development, Probate Court, Treasurer, and more; and whereas the 43-year-old El Verado Square has been renovated into a technologically advanced, resilient, and energy-efficient building targeting LEED and FITWELL certifications; and whereas state-of-the-art security, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, building amenities, and public art will promote health, safety, and well-being for customers and staff; and whereas new technology has been implemented that increases employee efficiency and flexibility while facilitating collaboration; and whereas an iconic New Mexico building has been preserved, and the county's 817 employees and business customers will help revitalize downtown Albuquerque south of Central Avenue; and whereas this chambers is dedicated to former Commissioner Ken Sanchez, whose legacy and example of community service and integrity will inspire and endure; and whereas Bernalillo County at El Verado Square increases long-term sustainability through considerable reduction of the county's physical, environmental, and financial footprint. Now therefore be it resolved that the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners expresses profound gratitude and commendation to staff, management, former commissioners, building, design, and construction professionals, scientists, engineers, laborers, and taxpayers who made this day possible. Done. This 17th day of August 2021 in Bernalillo County, State of New Mexico, and signed by all the commissioners. Yay! Our new building has been proclaimed. Thank you. And so, moving on to certificates and awards. Before we do that, I just want to make sure for the record, County Clerk Linda Stover, were you able to record the roll call vote or deferring the agenda?
I did. I don't know whether they got it on paper or not, though, so we might ask Julianne.
I'm sorry?
Madam Clerk, if we can repeat that vote for the changes?
Sure.
I have it recorded. Thank you.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson. Mr. O'Malley. I did not hear her, Julie, but I'm assuming she said yes.
Aye.
There you go. Thank you. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti.
Aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And now, the moment we've all been waiting for, it's recognition of Larry English. And to present the recognition is County Manager Julie Morgasbaka.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So, we just wanted to recognize Larry English. So he actually works for the City of Albuquerque, officer, he's an office services worker. And I've known Larry for a few years, and he has always been helpful, and I just thought that it would be an appropriate time to acknowledge him for all his work, especially during COVID. We actually got all our mail delivered to the county throughout the county because of his help. So I'm gonna, if you will indulge me, I'd like to go ahead and read this. So this is in recognition of serving the county's mail and package deliveries during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mail deliveries are an essential service so that Bernalillo County receives important communications necessary to serve and respond to members of our community. Larry English worked each day during the pandemic to ensure that all mail and packages for Bernalillo County were received, signed, and tracked. When the county offices were closed, Larry answered the call to ensure that the offices of the Assessor, Clerk, and Treasurer received their mail. Larry arrived dutifully to work each day and coordinated with the Office of the County Manager to ensure that all mail was received promptly. His assistance was especially crucial to the smooth operation of the primary and general elections during the pandemic. So you just want to thank you, Larry, for your dedication to the essential functions of the county and allowing the county to continue its services to the public despite the pandemic's challenges. So thank you so much, Larry. We really appreciate you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Larry, would you like to say a few words? Would you like to unmute yourself so we can hear you? Oh, you don't know how. Okay. You're in the conference room, right? Okay. Well, we'll just wave to you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Oh, okay. I just also want to add my thanks to Larry. He, I first met him many, many years ago when I was on the City Council. That was, those were the days where we'd get a huge package delivered to us, huge case, lots of trees, I think sacrificed for that big bundle. And, you know, he's always been very, I think, very, he has a very strong worth, work ethic. He's always been very pleasant, and I really appreciate you, Larry. I wanted to add my thanks as well.
I appreciate, thank you all, with all the faith that you had, trust in me doing this service for you guys. I really was honored to do this. You guys have been fantastic for the support on everything I've done for you guys. Thank you so much. I'm very grateful and thank you. And...
Thank you, Larry. How long have you been working at the city doing this job?
I've been in this building when this opened up, and 36 years ago, in 1985. I came permanent in '87. I came permanent. About 34 years permanent here.
Good job. Congratulations.
And also helped out with Debbie O'Malley when she was a city councillor, helped delivering her books. It was really pleasant every time I go to her house. And I do miss Ken Sanchez. He was really great. Every time I went over to his house, he will be missed, but he's always in our hearts. Thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you. So moving on, Julianne, do we still have one person signed up for public comment?
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Donald Chavez who signed up for public comments, but he is not in on the meeting.
Okay. So then we'll go ahead with the presentations, and if he shows up, then we'll circle back to that after the presentations. So first up, New Mexico County's presentation, Steve Kopelman to present.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to introduce Steve. So Steve has been, he is the Executive Director for New Mexico Counties. He's been the Executive Director for eight years and has been with New Mexico Counties for 20. And I just want to say, he's just been a wonderful partner. New Mexico Counties is a great resource for Bernalillo County and all the other counties. They offer so many services that he's going to be talking about, including various affiliates. We have a manager's affiliates, clerks, the treasures, the sheriffs, that, for the detention centers. And they're just such a, such a huge support and help to all the counties. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Steve, for your presentation. So thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Julie, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to address you. I'm disappointed. I was really excited about the possibility of seeing your new building, but I guess I'll have to wait till next time. New Mexico Counties, 33 Strong is our tagline, and I want to talk a little about it. Julianne, if you can go to the next page. Thanks. So in 1968, New Mexico Association of Counties Incorporated, but we've actually been around since 1936, when we started formally having conferences every year. Goes back to Franklin Delano Roosevelt, Jesse Owens in the Olympics, and the organization has come a long way since then. We started out with a handful of employees. Things really took off in the mid-1980s when the workers' comp insurance for public entities was pretty much nonexistent in New Mexico. The private markets stopped writing comp insurance, and so New Mexico Counties got together with our member counties and with A.J. Gallagher, and we started the self-insurance pool. That was 1987. 1989, the multi-line pool. And then in 1995, when state risk management decided it no longer was going to provide coverage for law enforcement, that's sheriffs and detention, New Mexico County stepped up. So we have been around, and we've really professionalized over the years. We have about 40 employees. We have an office in Albuquerque that's just down the street from you, and our main office is on Galistao, just a couple of blocks from the Capitol. We invite all of you. I know a lot of you have been there, especially during the legislative session, to park and to spend some time with us. But we have a strong passion for working with county government. I was Santa Fe County Attorney two separate times for about six and a half years, and I've been with New Mexico Counties now for 20 years. And I still feel so strongly that county government is really the heart of New Mexico. It's the level of government that makes the most difference and gets the most done. Our organization is nonpartisan, and we really try to bring New Mexico forward in every, every way possible. Julianne, if you can go to the next slide, please. So real quickly, all 33 counties are members of New Mexico Counties, and we also have a separate NMCA or New Mexico County Insurance Authority Pool Board. But we really do pretty much everything. We only do counties. We don't work for cities. We don't work for schools. We hold conferences and workshops. We work on legislation. We operate the self-insurance pools on behalf of, actually 32 out of 33 counties are in our pools. We're really a statewide advocate. We do a tremendous amount of training and education for county officials and for county employees. If you can go to the next slide. Just real quickly, this is New Mexico Counties organizational chart, and you can see we are very diverse. Any issues that come up involving county government, we try to help counties with. We work a lot with both the larger urban counties and with the rural counties. We do everything. We have the Communication Director. We have news briefs that come out every Thursday. We have a very strong legislative team led by Brian Moore that works all, all year, really advocating on behalf of county government. We do a lot of loss prevention work, risk management work. We have an in-house legal bureau. We have a very, very proficient finance and administration department and government affairs. Okay, Julianne, if you can go to the next slide, please. I wanted to focus now on the self-insurance pools. And again, we think this is an incredible collaboration and partnership with it, with all of our member counties. Like I say, we have 32 counties that are in at least one line of our self-insurance pools. Why are New Mexico Counties in the pooling such an advantage, and why is it such, so valuable to counties? Well, all we do is county government, okay? We are a nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization. Under the IRS code, we just support county government, and under New Mexico law, we are a nonprofit organization. So no commissions, and we don't make a profit. We put the money from the pool back into the pool, okay? Our employees are specialists in county government. Our loss prevention program, for example, we have specialists in safety, detention, employment matters, law enforcement. In fact, our law enforcement expert is Greg Reese. I think a lot of you know Greg, when he was your undersheriff in Rad MDC. Greg, we also have an accreditation program, and Jessica Tyler, who also used to work for Bernalillo County, is our accreditation manager. We do a tremendous amount of training and educational sessions. And when I say we're really in step with county government, over the last two years since the pandemic hit, we knew county governments were going to be really challenged financially, and our NMCA pool board, two years in a row, voted to reduce the workers' comp contributions or premiums by 50% each year. So Bernalillo County saved upfront $1.3 million in premiums, but not only that, you were able to get a substantial reduction, and your deductible for workers' comp went from $500,000 to zero. So you have no deductible on workers' comp. You pay less money than you ever did. And so, and we handle all your claims. The Board of Directors of the Insurance Authority is made up exclusively of county elected officials and employees. It's a 13-member board, and Bernalillo County has two positions on that board. Lisa Sedia White and Shirley Reagan are both on the board, and the self-insurance pool is really owned and controlled by the member counties. So it's really like a co-op. We operate it. We run the insurance pools, but you folks control it, and the Board of Directors makes those calls. So Shirley and Lisa were both integrally involved in making those decisions to reduce the premiums on behalf of all member counties. In addition, over the years, New Mexico Counties, at the direction of its board, has returned over $19 million in equity since the pool was formed, and Bernalillo County has received in excess of $5 million. Julianne, if you can go to the next page, please. Just a few more things about our services. We handle all the claims in-house. We have an incredible staff of claims adjusters, both the workers' comp and on the liability side. We handle all of the underwriting in-house. We do all of the loss prevention, all the financial work. We allow counties to focus, really, we work with them on where the losses occur. We work on custom loss reports, and I know we've worked real closely with Lisa and her staff on putting together custom reports that focus on information that's valuable for you. So it's true partnership and collaboration. Counties have a voice in choosing which attorneys from our pool board list are used, and I know we work closely with your county attorney, Ken Martinez, and with Jessica Randall now, Mike Garcia before that. Counties get integrally involved in the claims, very unlike private insurance. And again, with New Mexico Counties, the pool, the counties have a very, very strong voice. Just two more slides real quickly. The scope of services in our loss prevention department, I mentioned we have expertise in law enforcement, detention, general safety, and we do a tremendous amount of training. We do safety inspections for all the counties, for the workers' comp administration, and we have an accreditation program that Jessica Tyler now is in charge of. And just to give you an idea, we have 208 standards for adult detention. Bernalillo County is accredited. You're one of nine counties that have accreditation. What does that mean? It gives you a 5% reduction in your premium, but not only that, it provides that if you're accredited, the reinsurance company, Berkeley, provides an additional $3 million of coverage for medical and mental health claims because you're accredited. That's how much credibility our organization and New Mexico Counties have out in the marketplace. You can get an idea of the broad spectrum of different types of training, everything from crisis intervention, CPR, first aid. We have a great online program, Local Gov. You. We do defensive driving. We do OSHA training. We partnered many years ago with New Mexico State University to create the County College. It's now the New Mexico Edge Curriculum Development, and I know thousands of county employees and county officials over the years have gotten certification, have taken what we consider to be excellent college-level courses focused on county government. The last slide, Julianne, is just that back in 2015, we began an in-house legal bureau. We found that we were spending a tremendous amount of money on outside counsel defending counties in lawsuits, and so by forming an in-house bureau, we're able to at times draw a line in the sand. We were also often told, well, you know, all these cases settle even when you have a winning position. And we say one of the reasons is because we settle a case for $20,000 and it would cost $100,000 to take it to trial. Well, with in-house legal attorneys, they're on salary. We no longer have to worry about that. And so we've had some incredible results over the last few years, especially in civil rights cases. And if you have any questions about that, I'm sure your county attorney, Ken Martinez, can vouch for us. But again, I'm very passionate about working for county government. I love working with, with you folks. Our staff is pretty amazing. And I also wanted to take a minute now, because our president this year is your county clerk, Linda Stover, and it's been fantastic working with Linda. And I thought maybe if it's okay, Madam Chair, if I could turn it over to Linda to say a few words about what she's doing with us and just her impressions on working with New Mexico Counties. Thank you.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Linda Stover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I went on board with New Mexico Counties about four years ago, I had no idea how much they actually did to service the counties in New Mexico. And something that I've wanted to do as president is to make people aware of New Mexico Counties. We've got so many new people that come and go out of the state, and they actually get elected and they served on commissions or other panels. They don't realize what New Mexico Counties can do for them. But we're going to do an awareness campaign over this year, hopefully, if COVID doesn't stop us, and go into every single county, talk about new counties, talk about the things that Mr. Kopelman just talked about. We've got a fantastic mental health program. We've worked with elections. We work with corrections. We do, all of the affiliates come through us. You just can't find a better group of people, and we're wanting to make people aware of them. County government is where local government is, and that's exactly where everything starts, is right there in your county. And we're going to try and make people aware of your county, where you live, and New Mexico Counties, and what they can do to service you and help you get along. It's great to be here. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Again, we're really excited. This is one of President Stover's initiatives. We're actually working with Kathy McGill on this campaign. We're going to be putting together videos. We're going to custom the videos. And as Linda said, I mean, when I look at some of the achievements in your county, you know, mental health, et cetera, I mean, there's some phenomenal programs, and we want to make all of New Mexico aware of how much incredible work county government is doing. We appreciate it. I'm happy to stand for any questions. And, you know, I'd love to meet with you folks more often. I know I've done a little work with some of you, but hopefully as we open up after the pandemic, you know, knock on wood, you know, I'll be able to come down, meet more often with you. But I work with Julie very closely, with County Clerk Stover, with Shirley, Lisa, and the attorneys, and all of our staff does. And we love working with you, and we really appreciate the time. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that informative and comprehensive presentation. I see we have a few questions. Commissioner Benson, I saw your hand first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kopelman, I just want to say thank you. I had the pleasure of working with you during the last legislative session, and you were easy to talk with, easy to hold of, very knowledgeable of the legislature's agenda and how they will impact all of the counties throughout New Mexico. And you're an advocate for us, even behind the scenes. Even when we're not necessarily there, you're still advocating for the counties. And yeah, I just appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Barboia.
Hi, thank you. And I think I was going to ask Linda Stover to give an example about what she thinks that she did. So great. I did wonder, I'm just so interested in learning as a new commissioner, are you all funded just through membership dues across the counties? Or how are you funded?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. We get participation fees from all the counties. The fees haven't been raised in, I think, about 12 years. In addition to that, the, under the, for the insurance pools, the counties will pay in an administrative fee, and so that takes care of salaries for the folks that work on the insurance side. We also handle a number of federal and state grants. We get money coming in on the grants also. And, you know, we're not there to make money, but the insurance pools have been extremely successful, and so there's a nice fund balance there. But that money doesn't come to our organization. The money from the insurance pool stays there, and it's under the auspices of county members.
Thank you. That was solid. And thanks, I heard a lot of great things about the benefits of the insurance pool and our county. So great to get an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you so much. I am not seeing any hands raised, so thank you so much for that presentation, and we will move on. Next up, University of New Mexico Hospital Report, fourth quarter FY 2021, presented by UNMH CEO Kate Becker. It's always good to see you, Kate.
Hi, everybody. And thanks for giving us some time tonight. I will say, I have two dogs in here who have been totally quiet, so now they will definitely start barking. All right. So first of all, you have our quarterly report in your packet. I do want to call your attention to a couple of items, and then I'd also like to give you a brief update on COVID in our community and in our hospital. So first, as you know, this quarterly report is also our fiscal year-end report, and FY 21 was a very unusual year in many ways, including financial. You'll note on our balance sheet on page 16 of your packet, and on our income statement on page 17, that we have some significant changes and some new entries. First, you'll see in several of the entries, information regarding capital replacement. These items primarily reflect capital funding being appropriately allocated for the new hospital tower project. So if you've driven down Lomas lately, you've seen our parking garage is well underway. So if you've driven down Lomas lately, you've seen our parking garage is well underway, and that garage is funded entirely by hospital capital funds. Our new tower construction will kick off as soon as the new parking garage is finished and old parking garage is torn down, because that's where the new hospital tower is going. That will be funded by a combination of hospital capital funds and financing. Second, you'll see some items that are related to pandemic funding in our financial statements, like the Medicare Advanced Payment Program. That federal program enabled hospitals to receive advanced payments last year from the government for Medicare patients to tide us over during the first surge of the COVID pandemic. And so now it's time to pay those funds back, so you'll see those in there as well. Our year-end report also includes our annual report on mill levy funding. So as you know, the mill levy is dedicated to the operations and maintenance of the hospital. So on page 18 of your packet, you'll see the summary of operations and maintenance expenses that mill levy funding supports. Our facilities maintenance and environmental services have been particularly important during this year of COVID, as we work to keep our environment operating in a safe manner during the COVID pandemic. All righty, so most of our statistics on the other pages reflect the ups and downs of access to care during the pandemic. Unfortunately, as a result of some of the delays in care that we saw during COVID, our hospital's been very full since the spring, and many of our patients are much sicker, and they've required higher levels of care. Recognizing that we can't control delays in care resulting from the pandemic, we still want to create as much access to care as possible. So you'll note on exhibit B, Primary Care, that's page 59 in your packet, that we're continuing to work to meet our goal of providing additional access to primary care. We will be launching a survey in the next few weeks with help from Brian Sanderoff and his team, asking residents of Bernalillo County about what they believe are current barriers to their access to primary care and how we can best address those barriers, whether through its additional clinics, mobile clinics, or telehealth visits. That information will help us make the best possible use of our resources while we work towards improving access to primary care. I'm also happy to say, UNMH has extended an offer to our first-ever Director of Community Engagement. And I want to say thank you to County Manager Julie Murgasbaca for participating in our interview process for that role. We're looking forward to the selected candidate joining us and diving in to help us respond to our community health needs assessment. Which "community health needs" leads me to a bit of an update on COVID. For the past several months, UNMH has been very full with very sick patients, but thankfully, it's been a small number of COVID-positive patients. Over the last few weeks, we've seen that number rise dramatically. Between July 16th and today, the number of adult COVID-inpatients at UNMH has tripled. We have reactivated our emergency operations center. We've reopened the state call transfer center to try to help level load patients in ICUs across the state. And the state has increased the cadence of meetings of the state medical advisory team as all of healthcare tries to respond to the surge we are seeing from the Delta variant of COVID. Just like all of you, everyone who works in healthcare is tired of COVID. We're tired, we're demoralized, we don't want to be going through this again, and we know we are heading into probably another four months of fighting with Delta. We have the evidence from England in terms of how long it's taken them, and we have a pretty good idea of what we're facing. So, one positive thing we're seeing, and I know, folks, we're talking about this a little bit earlier, if people have been vaccinated, even if they catch COVID, they're about eight times less likely to be hospitalized and about 25 times less likely to die. So, this is my plea to you this evening, please get vaccinated, encourage your families to get vaccinated, encourage your friends to get vaccinated, encourage random people you see in the grocery store or on the street to get vaccinated. Everybody needs to be vaccinated. And the best gift you can give a healthcare worker right now isn't cookies, it isn't burritos, it's getting vaccinated. So we really want to encourage that. So with that, I'll close. I'm happy to answer any questions. And then I know we also have coming up an update on the Crisis Triage Center.
Thank you so much, Kate, and I will second that in urging everyone to get vaccinated, keep wearing those masks, let's keep ourselves and everybody else protected. Thank you. Are there any questions? Chief Perez, I see your hand up.
On that note, Madam Chair and Commissioners, we will be holding a vaccination clinic this Saturday at Raymond G. Sanchez. We will be doing J&amp;J, Moderna, and Pfizer, and we also will be allowing the booster to happen there as well. So this is in partnership with Vida Medical, and we've got 75 people registered already, so this is looking really, really promising. So help get the word out, Kate and Madam Chair, thank you. And we're going to do everything in our part to get that out there and get people vaccinated. So just wanted to announce that.
Okay. And Chief, can I just ask a clarifying question? Who is eligible for a booster at this point?
So it's individuals who have had organ transplant or those that are immunocompromised. And we're not really asking for proof of it, per se, but we're trusting that they are coming forward, and it's only those individuals. But we're really not asking to provide any kind of medical record showing that. I'm just the honesty on our system more than anything.
Okay. And is there a specific time interval since they got their last shot, or?
I believe it's 28 days. They have to have 28 days since the second dose that they had. It's 28 days from that last dose.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll be from 8 to 11 at Raymond G. Sanchez.
This Saturday?
This Saturday.
Great, terrific. I hope a lot of people show up for that.
Me too.
Any other questions, comments for Kate Becker? I know that people are just eager to get to the Crisis Triage Center presentation. Commissioner Barboah.
Well, I just want to thank you, Kate. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kate, for the update and for the work you have been doing at the hospital. I did want to say, I was mentioning that I'm COVID-positive right now. I think I'm coming out of it. I was vaccinated. I do think, I wonder if there's some public health announcements that the county, city, state should make? Because I think in large part, our communities feel like, oh, we're vaccinated, we're good. I was, myself, still very careful with my mask and really, I stay home, I get to work from home, privileged enough to get to work from home and pretty much stay home. So I think, just not to you, Kate Becker, I think you're already doing everything you need, more to us as the county, maybe city and state, just creating greater awareness both about vaccines and like, that it is still important to mask up and do the things. Like, we all got a little bit comfortable.
Right, right. Thank you, Commissioner Barboah. Chief Perez, since you're there, do you know the governor came out with a new mask mandate this afternoon, correct? Is that, and I see, Kate, you're nodding your head. What does that entail? That masks are now mandated in indoor spaces now?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that's correct, in all indoor spaces. And we've had that in the county for, we're going on, I believe, two weeks, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, it's all indoor facilities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Kate. County Manager Julie, are you going to present now on Crisis Triage Center?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So I just thought it was appropriate to present to you, kind of give you a status report of where we're at with the Crisis Triage Center. So first of all, I just want to begin by saying, we did have a little bit of a delay because, as you know, UNMH is our critical partner in all this, and they've been very, very busy dealing with the COVID situation. So we totally get it, we totally understand it, but it is really important that we get this Crisis Triage Center up and running. So just basically, on the onset of the Behavioral Health Initiative, what we've done, as you know, and I don't want to repeat myself too much, just to remind you that we do have, we've launched over 20 programs, because you have to have a place to send people to get treatment or to refer them to after they exit the Crisis Triage Center. So it's taken time to launch all those programs, and we've done that. But with that being said, we've never lost sight of having that Crisis Triage Center. So wanted to remind you again that we do have, kind of, we've already initiated the Crisis Triage Center at the CARES campus, and these are for the lower acuity patients. So, and this is in partnership, total partnership with UNMH, because we knew it was going to take time to construct the facility. So just know that we do have that in place, and that has been up and running, and I believe it's with up to 16 beds that we're allowed. The program provides stabilization services for clients in crisis, and we're accepting referrals from all behavioral health providers in our community. And we know that multiple Crisis Triage Centers are needed in the community, and the demand in the county and in partnership with UNMH, we are well underway for this, the second Crisis Triage Center. And this is, like I say, located on the footprint of UNMH. And so we're, as you, just wanted to remind you again, the county has set aside $20 million for construction. UNMH has also graciously, as our partners agreed, to set aside the same amount of funding, as well as agreeing to place the Crisis Triage Center, the new constructed Crisis Triage Center, on their footprint. And so in February of 2021, UNMH did an RFP, and they, an architect was selected to design the new facility. So we have kind of, I'm going to show you kind of an idea of what the floor plan is going to look like, construction costs, and estimated timeline of complete of the project is expected in November of 2021. And with this overview, I'm going to turn it in over to Kate, so she can talk about the progress that UNMH has made with the Department of Behavioral Health on this project up to date. And then we also have Margarita Sanchez Chavez also available to answer questions. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kate?
Thank you, Julie, and Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm just going to say a couple of things. The first one is, as Julie mentioned, COVID has been a bit of a disruption in our normal operations. So that's been kind of a challenge, but I'm really proud that we've been able to keep moving forward on this project. So we identified a location on the south side of Marble, adjacent to our current Adult Psychiatric Center. And that location currently houses two other programs. One is outpatient programs for children in behavioral health, and the other is our PALS Call Transfer Center, which you heard me refer to a little bit earlier. That's the state call transfer center right now for COVID patients. So we needed to relocate both of those programs so that we would be able to use that space for building the Crisis Triage Center. We identified a new building that we can really move into with just dropping our IT. We don't have to do a lot of remodeling for those programs to move in. And so on July 31st, 30th, whatever the last Friday in July was, our hospital board of trustees approved us moving forward with purchasing that property that we're moving everybody into, and that goes to the UNM Board of Regents this Thursday for approval. So we'll be able to move forward with completing the appraisal of that property, closing on it, and getting folks moved. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Margarita and Rodney, so they can walk you through the site and the design of the building and some of the services that will be in it, because it's really a nice adjacency because of where we've been able to locate it. So Margarita?
So, Kate and Rodney, I think I'm going to start, and then I'll hand off to Margarita. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Rodney McNeese, one of the executive directors at the hospital. The slide that's, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the evolution of the Crisis Center model, because kind of where we are today is significantly evolved from where we originally started this discussion, which was more looking at kind of a standalone facility that was really specific only to the Crisis Center. And part of that is because of the continuum of care needs of a lot of behavioral health patients, and that's part of the rationale for locating it in proximity to all the UNM current behavioral health adult programs, so that patients at the Crisis Center would also have ready access potentially to other kinds of services that could support them. One of the big community requests also over time has really been our need to better address the needs of first responders and APD, Bernalillo County Sheriff Department, and other first responders. And the fact that there's often a fair amount of frustration when they bring patients to us as far as exactly where they need to go and how quickly we can accommodate seeing those patients. So part of this model is also to try to make sure that we're creating a more seamless process for law enforcement, and that we have that combined now with our psychiatric emergency services, which originally wasn't part of the discussion, but we think it really makes a lot of sense to incorporate our psych emergency department that would be co-located with the Crisis Center, because then there really truly is no wrong door. So you want to go to the next slide, please? So this is just showing, to kind of orient you, and Kate kind of talked a little bit about this, where the little star is, are, excuse me, are really the two existing programs that are going to have to be moved. And the other facilities you see there are the existing adult psychiatric center and then some other kinds of buildings that are related to other kinds of campus activities. If you want to go to the next slide, you can begin to see, and this will get kind of gradually more detailed as we go along, and then I'm going to hand it off to Margarita to talk more specifically in depth about some of the programs. But on this slide, you can really kind of see the, kind of the siding of this building. So it is adjacent to the Psych Center. It'll have an entry plaza, it'll have, Marble is at the top of the slide to kind of orient you, so that's kind of to the north. So it'll have good visibility from Marble for patients coming into that facility. It also, as you see, there's kind of a drive that goes around to the back of the facility, and this is a Sally Port for law enforcement and first responder drop-off, which again, has been one of our main issues, is how do we kind of consolidate this in a way that for law enforcement will work where they can kind of turn those services around quickly. So I'm going to stop and let Margarita begin to talk a little bit more detail and put more definition to some of what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney, Madam Chair, Commissioners. These next few slides are really diving into the services that we are working to build out as a function of the Crisis Triage Center. As Julie mentioned, and per IMD, Federal Institute for Mental Disease requirements, we can have a maximum of 16 clients at any one given time in a Crisis Triage Center. And so, as we all know, 16 beds does not meet the need in the community. So in addition to what's being done at the CARES campus and what we're talking about building out as a function of this UNM CTC, or Crisis Triage Center, we believe there are additional services that are needed to be co-located to, again, meet the greater needs in the community. There is discussion right now, and we're assessing the viability to move psychiatric emergency services onto the existing footprint of the CTC site. If you recall on the last slide, and where services are currently located, is an adjacent building, but this would be co-located in the same building. So this last slide we were just in showed that public entrance, folks, clients and family members would come to this building entrance here, and they could access Crisis Triage Center, psychiatric emergency services, and a pure living room, all from that same entrance. So this creates a no-wrong-door access point for folks who are, especially who are in crisis, to not have to figure out what's the right spot for them to access, but they come to one entrance, and the staff and the greeting, the team who is greeting clients at that entry can help them get connected to the right level of services. So again, So again, shared public access for psych emergency and crisis triage. This darker purple area is a pure living room. If you imagine what your living room looks like, the intention is this for to be a less clinical, less threatening environment. For clients to drop in, access supports via a peer. Some recliner chairs, some small meeting rooms so that peers and peer case managers can work with clients to help them navigate supports. But again, a less threatening, less clinical setting for clients to drop in and access services. This blue area would be the space for the crisis triage center. So as you can see, it's a much larger space to be able to provide that continuum of care. The next slide actually breaks out some proposed. Sex for that, for that space. And then again, our psychiatric emergency services co-located in that lighter purple. Building services, that would be kind of shared facilities faces as well for this entire building. Again, that Sally Port access to psych emergency and CTC in the back here for law enforcement to address what we continue to hear. As a gap or a barrier for first responders to connect clients to these types of supports. So this slide is again, a little bit busier than the previous slides. But we tried to go with each corresponding slide a little bit more in detail. But I want you to focus on this area here, which is gonna be really the primary area. Where the crisis triage center services will be provided. There will be a male wing and a female wing. It's not determined which is which. But there will be swing doors indicated by these kind of ticker lines. That can be opened or closed, which will allow us to have beds. You know, if we need to have eleven beds who are, that are male and less, you know, five who are female. We could use these doors to flex those beds as opposed to only having eight on each wing and really carving that out. But this allows for flexibility, again, recognizing that we can only have sixteen clients at any one given time. We will have more beds on the unit than sixteen. But again, the ability to flex those beds a little bit, you know, to accommodate increased need on the male side or increase need on the female side. We have identified a center courtyard because we know how important open space, being able to get sunlight. And have just kind of some de-escalation space for clients to access that. So it will be accessible from within the unit. Dean rooms, dining rooms, therapy areas, group rooms, access to laundry, exam rooms, all in this space as well. And then these nurse touchdown spaces, those will be nursing units, it'll be on each corner. And then a nurse workstation here on this side. So again, touchdown spaces for staff to always have eyes on clients. Again, the living room space here in the purple, entry space here. These are the exam rooms and the spaces for the psych emergency services, Sally Ports. And then shared space here as well. So electrical and trash and whatnot in that shared space. Belongings rooms, patient belongings rooms, conference rooms, staff lounge and lockers, all again in these spaces. In a crisis triage center, we are gonna be providing a wide array of services as we are on the care campus. Including group, therapeutic groups, one-on-one services and evaluation and robust case management. On the care campus, we really have seen a, a much greater need for case management than really anything else. That we're seeing, our clients are meeting with our clinicians and getting that behavioral health support. But many of our clients have difficulty just navigating social services, navigating transportation. How do I get my medications? What do I do about housing? And so really focusing on addressing those needs as well has really been a top priority. So as you can see, a lot of work has happened over the last couple of months specifically. Since we've had the architect onboard to really zero in on this. Myself and folks from UNM visited the Donia Anna Crisis Triage Center. Actually yesterday, we drove down to Las Cruces to visit that site. And it is a very different model. They only have the day model. So the clients can only stay for twenty-four hours in the model at the care campus. And in this model, clients will be able to stay for up to fourteen days. So I'm hoping that this is a great overview and can answer some of the questions that were had. And Madam Manager, with that, I will stand for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I have some questions.
Oh, hold on, Commissioner Burbo, I just put her, got her hand up first.
Oh, it's okay. She can go first.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner O'Malley.
Okay. The sixteen bed limit, who is that set by?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, that's the federal requirement. It's the IMD Institute for Mental Disease.
Okay. So once folks come to the triage center. What is, what, how long can they stay in the center to get treatment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, based on the state of New Mexico licensing requirements, they can stay for up to fourteen days. So that, that exists also within the care campus. Right now, we're seeing an average length of stay of about five days, but clients can stay for up to fourteen days.
And I was asking that question because when we first. Were talking about the tax and getting that going and getting these, these programs underway. One of the big issues was families not knowing where to take a child or relative. So instead of us having a crisis. And, and then they said that they would go to the hospital and they couldn't stay there for very long. Typically that the, that means to be admitted and then, you know, they, that leave them, they had no where to go. So beyond the fourteen days, let's say someone stays there for fourteen days but needs additional care, what, what is available?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, it is often on a case-by-case basis. I can speak to what we've navigated for the last year and a half at the care campus. On day one, the clients who come into the crisis triage center, the stabilization unit. Begin working with the case manager to pursue long-term care and long-term treatment. If that is, is what they're wanting or needing. We work very closely with the families because to your point, we do have a lot of families who are coming who have had no other option. You know, maybe they've exhausted every other resource and they're not sure what to do. We work with families to connect folks to long-term care. What we see a lot is sometimes it's just housing, right? They need housing in order to maintain that support. So we immediately begin working on those things. About eighty percent of the clients that we have seen also have a co-occurring substance use disorder. So sometimes it's a long-term substance use treatment. But it is dependent on each client. I will say something that's really important I should have mentioned earlier is that based on the state of New Mexico CTC requirements. All CTCs are voluntary. So that is also important, right? If somebody comes in and they wanna leave or family brings them in and they wanna leave in a few hours. They are allowed to leave because of the voluntary nature of these programs. But again, we work through motivational interviewing to really help clients understand the value of staying. And be connected to those long-term services. Rodney, would you add anything to that?
I would, I would just say, a lot of it is the care coordination component. And really working with individual clients on what does that next step look like? The other piece is we would try to bridge them into other types of services. And part of the other kind of scope of work that I think Margarita may talk later on the agenda with. Department's update is around another scope of work to actually develop other kinds of specific services with UNM. Or that are targeted behavioral health. So I think that would help build out capacity that hopefully folks would, would better have options to flow into different kinds of services. Because right now that is one of the big challenges, just. Is access to behavioral health services in general.
On the triage center itself, you meant, I think there was mentioned of. A, either a construction date that was gonna start construction or complete. What was that date?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, it's by the current timeline. We are supposed to deliver, I think, the cost. And basically what would be the final cost proposal from the architect. And the schematic and design development documents by the end of November. And then from there, they would actually complete the construction documents. And as soon as those are completed, then it would actually go out to bid to begin the construction. As Kate talked about earlier, we think the timeline will sync up with the programs that are gonna have to move to accommodate the new building. And so it's a little bit fluid, but it should be that, that, that process, we should have the, the construction documents. Hopefully no later than the spring in order for that to go out for, to actually start the construction.
Another question I had, and now I forgot what it, what it was in your moment. Why don't we let Mr. Barbo ask questions, if I remember?
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Burbo. Unmute, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner O'Malley. And thank you, Kate and Rodney. I appreciate these updates and Margarita. I, I feel a little bit confused. I'm not exactly sure and County Manager Baca. Where, why I've been confused, but I feel like we have been in ABCDC meetings where, or other meetings, right? Where law enforcement, Bullshar, ABD, Fire have said that there wasn't a crisis stabilization or a crisis. Gosh, now I'm getting myself confused. Crisis triage center. And the, and then I believe when I went through the tour of the CARES campus. There was something about we have a certain level of crisis triage, but because we didn't have nurses, we have not the extended needed level. I just really want clarity, right? In this world of different acronyms and systems and care being named similarly. It's hard to understand where the services, and we're saying we already had it. And I think I've heard recently that we did it. So is there some clarity for myself and perhaps the public around where we are? I don't know who it's to, maybe County Manager Baca, Margarita, I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, Commissioner and Julie, if you're okay with me taking this question. So we do have a licensed crisis triage center at the care campus. It's that unit we visited that has the two wings and the centralized nursing station. We received the second license in the state of New Mexico for crisis triage center. But exactly to your point and to what was mentioned by the manager in her intro. Is that this level of acuity is serving a lower level of acuity for clients. So we do have twenty-four hour nursing. That is a requirement of the licensure. But we do not have, you know, twenty-four hour psychiatric care. And so all the referrals that we are receiving, the clients are a little bit more stable. Then will be the clients that will report to this new CTC at the, at the UNM base. So again, it is providing both the levels of that continuum. So if someone reports to us who has too high of an acuity, we'll transport them and get them immediately to the UNM site and vice versa. So that we can really be, meet both the levels of need in the community.
Thank you so much. And my second sort of question to that, right, is that I'm glad to hear there's some dates. I also think, and I'm so new, so maybe it's just that, right? But that, I'm not gonna be able to use that excuse soon. Right, that there's been a lot of, like I get, and I feel like with all recognition that I feel like. UNMH, MDC and all our frontline officers and fire folks. You know, do the work that's hardest during these crises. And so total recognition and UNMH. I just worry, it feels like this is also in that same MDC is the other place, right? Where you all just receive and are responsible for everybody that nobody else wants to be responsible for. Or everybody that only your specialty can support, right? And that's between all these services. And with everyone recognizing the super need for this crisis triage. I just sort of, and a level, I don't know if there's something the county can do at the CARES campus to increase our acuity level. If we're just waiting for this construction. Cause I guess I'm imagining that with the dates around documents being ready, that we're still a few years away from having. Or like, what would be the prediction there of how far we truly are away from having a functioning level? Crisis triage with the licensure needed to truly relieve some of that's what's happening at MDC and at the hospitals.
Madam Chair and Commissioner, I agree with you a hundred percent. And, you know, we met with UNMH, I guess, last week, right, Kate? To talk about, you know, just our desire to move forward. Cause I will say, we talked about this a few years ago. And, and it still hasn't been built. So I can see the frustration. And that is why the crisis triage center or the crisis triage component was instituted at the, at the CARES campus. But I guess, you know, I'm, I'm not one of the commissioners, but I do, I guess I'm a little confused, Margarita. Cause I do get a lot of inquiries from, you know, like Fire and our law enforcement. Can they drop off someone? I guess with, I guess we're calling them the lower acuity cases, could they drop somebody off there at the CARES campus?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager, we do actually receive clients right now from first responders. Both into our detox unit and we have received a number of clients into our crisis triage center, our stabilization unit. Via mobile crisis teams and via other first responder models. I actually was navigating a referral, an email that I got today from Fire, right? From a Fire crew who engaged with someone who they felt like has continued to cycle through the system. So that is happening as is right now. It will continue to expand. And Commissioner, to your, to your question is that we are actively working to hire and recruit more clinicians. We are in a clinician desert here in the literal desert in New Mexico. But we are working to recruit more clinicians so that we can continue to expand our capacity. To meet a greater need for a greater acuity here at the care campus. And so as soon as we can really get that staffed up, we intend to increase that capacity to a point. In full disclosure, right, our unit is not equipped a hundred percent anti-legature. So we always still have to make sure that we're safe and we're not bringing in clients who would be unsafe in those units. But again, we want to continue to increase and do everything we can to meet the need. In anticipation of a, of an extended period of time for construction.
I didn't hear, well, two things. I heard you also, is there different levels of acuity on detox? Cause I also feel like I've heard in different conversations that people get turned away if they're detoxed. They have to be, oh, they have to be walking or something.
They have to be able to ambulate on their own. Many of our clients are very unsteady in their ambulation and we bring, we still bring them in. But if someone is needing to hold them up and they can't walk on their own. The differentiation is at that point, there is a risk that they're unable to maintain their own airway. And so since we're unable to monitor them, provide that airway breathing and circulation monitoring, we have that level of criteria. But it's very common that somebody reports to us that's that initiated. They go to the hospital, they're stabilized and monitored and then they come right back to us. And so we have a, it's very rare actually that somebody is, is refused at the care campus and that they are connected to detox.
And then with this new crisis, because it has more level of acuity, would it be able to take detox at any level of detox? Or is that always gonna be the key? That somebody would have to go through the hospital if they're not?
So, so Madam Chair, Commissioner, I'll try to. So, so Madam Chair, Commissioner, I'll try to talk a little bit about that. So it really kind of depends on where they are medically, because it can actually be fairly medically unsafe to try to detox someone if you don't have the appropriate resources, especially alcohol detox. So one of the advantages with the proximity to the UNM services is we see currently in our psych emergency service, a whole lot of folks that have addiction issues. I mean, there's probably over half of our patients have also some kind of addiction issue. Actually, methamphetamine has been one of the largest issues lately. But with those being co-located, if with them accessing the facility, then yes, we would be able to take those patients. And if we determine they need higher levels of care, then that would be able to happen, including going to inpatient care for inpatient detox, which for some patients, if their medical stability is uncertain, that could be appropriate.
Thank you. That's so helpful. And that brings me, I think, well, two more questions, maybe, that what will be UNM's role and what is currently UNM's role at the CARES campus? And then would that be fully, like, where's the on-staffing and, you know, sort of the overall care of the facility, of the new facility? Is that UNM's role? Is it a collaboration between our staff and y'all?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, currently, we have an agreement with the University of New Mexico Hospital to provide the medical care on the CARES campus. So UNM provides our medical direction, our nursing staff, our MA staff, and all of, again, the medical enhancement, both for detox and crisis stabilization, and in the future for an outpatient clinic as well. If the new CTC, that will be a UNM site, right, we will continue to partner, but UNM will operate staff and provide all of those supports at the new site.
Okay. And do we anticipate with the need for psych care, does UNM already have access to those? And that's why we're not... Do we, I mean, if part of the problem has been finding clinicians, does UNM have a higher probability of finding clinicians or something that we're?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, I can speak to that a little bit. I mean, I think just generally, it's honestly extraordinarily difficult right now to get all kinds of healthcare workers, especially nurses, especially frontline workers, physicians, and behavioral health is no exception to that. We have the same kinds of challenges. And I know this is a statewide, and it's actually a national issue around shortages of these kinds of folks. So will be, I think, an ongoing challenge for us to staff, and especially if we are looking at another COVID potential surge, because as Kate said earlier, a lot of people are just frankly worn out. And I mean, I think it's, it just makes the work environment more difficult for healthcare workers. So whether we could be more successful or not, we would certainly hope to be. But it is going to be a challenge regardless for staffing kind of all of these levels of care.
Thank you. And I think last, I, you know, I had a few concerns come my way about the contracts or roles between UNMH and our behavioral services around offering some type of medicated assisted treatment, getting the licensure needed to enact that at our CARES campus or at MDC. And I guess I just worry is that I know that there's such a huge responsibility on the university. Like, what do we, I guess I'm just concerned, those things have come my way, right, that we've had a hard time in the contract to get those things, you know, enacted and rolling and in being like over years length of time to get those things rolling. And I guess I, I just don't know how we look ahead and prevent or catch what might already be coming our way. And I don't want to get there and be like, we have this great building, but we don't have the staff to fill it. We don't have, we haven't got the licensure because we've been in the middle of COVID. I guess, what is the, how do we look ahead to fix some of that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, specifically about MAT, we do have MAT in place at the CARES campus. We are doing Suboxone. We've been, I think it's been over a year that we've been doing Suboxone at the CARES campus. It did take a while because the providers had to be ex-wavered. But once that was done, that is happening, and we're providing that regularly. As a part of my quarterly update, I have some really exciting news about MAT at the jail and where we finally are with that. But I think there are proactive steps that we can easily begin. Number one, we can start hiring sooner rather than later. We don't need to have a completely ready building to start posting physicians. So we can start working on that. Something that's very fortunate is that the Biden administration recently put out a loan forgiveness program for behavioral health providers that has not always been available, but it's a loan forgiveness for up to $250,000 each. So that's huge. So that will hopefully help us recruit some even out-of-state providers. But Robbie and I are already beginning to work on a business plan and working on budgets and all the above, so that we will be ready to roll when we have a building.
And sorry, Madam Commissioner, Madam Chair, lastly, I don't think I've got a final date of what we would guess if the documents are done in December. And then does that usually like two years, year when construction, that kind of stuff?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, realistically, it would be sometime in 2023, hopefully towards the kind of the first part of the year of 2023. I think the estimate is once they get to the point of actually starting the building, it's probably looking at about a year, perhaps a little over a year to actually build a facility.
Thank you so much. I guess my last just comment, if I can, Madam Chair, is just to say, you know, I feel like it's, like, this is all obviously just what we have to do. We can't make a building up here magically. But I don't know what the other option, I really am saying this to the commission and the county, right, is that we have some responsibility around the way police have to chop these people around, the way hospitals are denying or turning away or overfilled, and the way our CARES campus can't or can't. And I just don't, it's like, it's one of those things, like MDC, we can't really function right now without an MDC, and yet requires so much. And the same is what I believe is this, like, whatever highest level of crisis treatment. So it worries me that we're continuing to be in this and will be for a good two years from now, and that I don't, that there's not another way that we can handle or give a little bit of relief to those systems. I appreciate this update. I'm excited for the new space here in my district and excited to see it go up. Thank you for that update.
Madam Chair, I didn't remember now what I wanted to talk about. So if anybody else wanted to speak first. So as was mentioned, you know, we made this decision some time ago, UNMH seemed like, well, it certainly is the very, makes sense as a partner because of the hospital and our relationship with folks there. But it has taken a long time, and it's going to continue to take a few more years. This is, so I have a couple of questions. Is the money, we set aside 20 million for capital for this building, and UNMH has, I think, $10 million. At this time, do you anticipate that that's going to cover this, the cost of this building? I mean, just, or do you anticipate it'll likely come in a lot more?
UNMH actually committed to match the county's investment.
They what?
UNMH actually committed to match the county's investment.
And then for operations, I mean, when I took a tour of the CARES campus, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Margarita, you mentioned that, you know, it's like one and a half billion of staffing just for the, for, you know, the CARES campus part. And then you had one and a half million dollars in a contract, I guess it was with UNMH for these medical services. So these kinds of support services are not inexpensive. I think that's important, too, for the public to realize that it takes a lot of support, staff, professionals, case managers, et cetera, to work with a population that is struggling like this. And so I think that's important to note, too, and that we make sure that we have the resource to do this and to continue to do this. And so I don't know, is there a commitment in terms of operations on the county side? Julie?
Yes, there is a commitment up to 10 million.
That's one time?
Yes.
Okay, because we couldn't do 10 million every year, that's for sure.
No.
Get about $20 million a year for the...
Right, exactly. Right, exactly. Overtime.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you for this discussion. Then we will move on. Julian, do we have somebody for public comment?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. Then we will move along to approval of minutes, minutes of the June 15, 2021 administrative meeting. I will move to approve those minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Casada. All in favor, raise your hand of approving those minutes. Perfect. And Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley? Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti?
Aye.
And next, I will move to approve the June 22, 21 special administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice Chair Casada. And all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley?
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti?
Aye.
And next, we've got a lot of minutes to approve here. I will move to approve the June 29, 2021 administrative meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Barboa. I knew you wanted to get your hand in there. So all in favor, raise your hand of approving June 29 minutes. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboa?
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley? I know she's there. Vice Chair Casada?
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti?
Aye.
So called.
Thank you. All of those minutes passed unanimously. And now on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution numbers for items 8A, 8I, 8J, 8K, 8N, 8P, and 8G.
All righty. 8B is AR 2021-69. 8I is FR 2021-70. J is AR 2021-71. K is FR 2021-72. N is FR 2021-73. P is AR 2021-74. And Q is AR 2021-75.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will just go ahead and move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could pull item N, I just wanted some information about it.
Item N, you would like to move, okay, pull off the consent agenda?
That item is going to become 9B, as in void.
Okay, we will put it under 9B. So Commissioner Benson? You have your hand up?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. I just wanted to say a word about the older Americans Advisory Council appointment, if that's possible?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So first, I just want to thank Commissioner Barboa for working with me on that. We both submitted applicants to it, and they were both highly qualified. And Commissioner O'Malley suggested that Commissioner Barboa and I meet outside of the meeting to discuss it, because it's hard enough to find good quality candidates. And, you know, you want to find a good place for them everywhere you can. So I just want to thank Commissioner Barboa. She, her, she started working with her candidate, and they actually found another really good committee for this individual. So my hats off to this individual. And I also want to speak highly of Shelley. She, Shelley Henny is my candidate that I'm putting forward, and I can't say enough good things about her. I want to thank her for coming out and serving our community in this way. And, yeah, and again, just finally again, thank you, Commissioner Barboa, and Commissioner O'Malley for the suggestion.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Casada?
Yes, you know, I'd like to really thank Robert Roy Bott for serving another term with the Water Protection Advisory Board. He is a big, strong advocate for the water and the agriculture of the South Valley. And, you know, he's a strong voice for, you know, everybody in Burnaleo County, in the state of New Mexico, when we have conversations about water. And it's something that, you know, is important to, I think, all of us on the commission and, you know, and for him to serve another term, I have to really, you know, thank him for, you know, giving up that much time. As we spoke earlier, it's really hard to find people to serve a term, let alone to serve, you know, the whole term so far, as long as I've been a commissioner. So I'd like to, you know, publicly thank him for his work, his longstanding work in the community, and his commitment to me to stand strong for protecting the water here in New Mexico and through Burnaleo County. So thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, ma'am. With the removal of N off of the consent decree, 8N, our numbers will change. So P will become AR 2021-73. Q will become AR 2021-74. And 9B will have a number when we get there.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification for the record. And Commissioner Barboa?
All right, I hope I don't make it more confusing. But some of these agendas on the consent agenda, some of these items, I guess I just feel our reason to be public and transparent around some of the way, and I guess I had questions about if some of them are ARPA funds or just HUD funding, and if they, and then, yeah, so I don't know, I don't know the best processes for me to name out the ones that I want more information on, and if that would pull out.
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, if I may, Commissioner Barboa, if you want to further discuss some items on the consent, then we can pull them off and place them appropriately on the agenda. So if you just let us know which ones those are, then I can give them new numbers.
Thank you. And sorry, I will get better at this. But I think a few of these, the emergency housing vouchers, sorry, I'm looking at two, because mine doesn't have a number on it. And the Burnaleo County Housing Administrative Plan, the single-site multifamily housing project.
Madam Chair, would you do the numbers, please?
Sorry. So that's going to be 8, consent agenda 8I, 8J, and 8K. And those will be moved to adoption resolution as items 9C, 9D, and 9E. And those will be moved to adoption resolution as items 9C, 9D, and 9E.
Julie, repeat that, please. It would be, okay, we've got 9A and B, so it'll be 9C.
Correct.
9D and 9E.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we will take, the only one that, well, J and K both had numbers, so we'll need to remove those numbers.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so we can go 74J.
So it'll be, so it's going to be 8B as in boy is 69, and then we're going to jump to 8P.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, 69, okay. 8P.
8P is going to be 70.
Okay.
Q is going to be 71.
All right.
Yeah, we'll continue on from there when we get to resolution.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we move on, I'd also like to highlight item on the consent agenda, item P and Q. These are two properties that are going to be, our first, from our property nuisance abatement. And I just wanted to thank staff for, and the commission for voting to move forward with our, you know, our new property nuisance abatement. These are going to be the first two. They're both in my district. I think if you've ever driven around the South Valley, you see a lot of these properties that we need to work on. These are going to be the first two that will be approved through the consent agenda. And I wanted to let everybody know that I truly believe that this will be the beginning of how we transform a lot of these historic neighborhoods in the South Valley. And I think when we start seeing, when they start seeing us making this a priority for our community, that people who also have rundown or abandoned properties, that they will, before they go through this, right, that they will go and they will either invest in them, or fix them, or sell them, so somebody can go in and use them. And so I really want to thank the commission staff for making this happen. This is huge for Bernalillo County, and I think it's probably going to be huge for a lot of people's districts, you know, looking at how do we improve these areas? In case you want to know, a lot of, like, one of these buildings is like half burnt, you know, so, and it's been there for years. And so we're really, you know, really improving how we do business. And because we have our own home rule and we're able to do this now, I wanted to make sure that we all celebrated the staff for working really hard to make sure that they have a priority list and to make sure that, you know, we really improve quality of life in these neighbors, neighborhoods. So thank you for that time, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, just real quick, I'd like to mention, Enrico, at some future time at the meeting, if you could talk a little bit about the program, just kind of describe it a little bit, this, this accounting program. I appreciate it.
O'Malley would be very happy to do that. We worked very long on this.
Yeah, it's my understanding, and as Commissioner Casada said, this is very important to neighborhoods and people who especially have been living next to some of these properties, it's just, it's very difficult. And, you know, it's not fair. And so I know that there's a lot of, sometimes pushback, where people are saying, well, that's a taking, you shouldn't be able to do that. But some properties have just been sitting there for years in disrepair. And I'm glad to hear that things are moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner O'Malley, we thank, we thank the commission for supporting us in this, and we're happy to give a little update, so much gratitude.
Thank you. Okay, so we've removed some items from the consent agenda. And Julianne, can you just verify, I want to make sure that I have this correctly, that we've removed 8N and 8I, J, and K. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So then I will move to approve the consent agenda. And is there a second in the, okay, in the new form, the amended form by Commissioner Casada? So all in favor of approving the standing items, please raise your hand. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. The consent agenda passes unanimously in its amended form. And so then moving on to adoption of resolution. Madam Clerk, could you please, again, reiterate those resolution numbers for items 9A, 9B, 9CD, and E, I believe?
I'm going to try.
You'll do it, I know you will.
Alrighty, we've got 9A is AR 2021-72. 9B is FR 2021-73. 9D is FR 2021-75. And AE is AR 2021-76.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I can just verify those numbers for the record, please? I have 9A as AR 2021-72. 9B as in boy. AR 2021-73. B is 74. D is 75. And E is 76.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So then we will start with 9A. Prioritized corridor improvements at 118th Street to I-40. And Vice Chair Casada, would you like to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll have some amendments, because I want to specifically put in my resolution that this is in Commission District 2. But some of the, and I think before I read the resolution, I just want you, I want everybody to know that, you know, this is a support, also supporting the city's efforts to improve traffic circulation on principal arterials on the Southwest Mesa. The focus is south of I-40, in case you want to know exactly where, when I say 118th Street. And it's for, to recognize there's an other, and I just wanted to make sure I do these amendments, that we know what district that we're looking at doing these road priorities, and why I'm wanting to clarify some of these edits. The county's 2022 Capital Outlay Resolution for Legislative Funding will be brought to the commission in the fall of 2022. And prior to that, Elias and I can work with all the commissioners to hopefully reach consensus on the county's top handful of infrastructure priorities. So that's why I want to put this as one of my priorities in District 2. So I know that my resolution mentions road connections beyond Southwest Mesa for 118th Street. And so, and the reasons why I'm asking for this is because we have future infrastructure needs that are going to come when it comes to medical facilities, and then also access from north and south bound on the interstate from 98th Street. And, you know, as you all know, there's a lot more development happening on West Central. And so we're trying to really figure out how we can, you know, mediate some of this traffic priorities. And so this is a priority for not only me, but for the city and Councilor Pena. So with that being, so I just wanted to clarify why I'm doing it, and what are the reasons why I think it's definitely going to be on my priority list for District 2. And I think, I don't, probably don't have to read the resolution, I don't believe. I think everybody's had a chance to read the resolution. And, but the amendments in the resolution, my fellow commissioners, will be that I will add in, in Commission District 2, so that it falls in my priority list. And so it's not thrown in with all of the whole priority list for all, for the whole of Bernalillo County, that it's specific to District 2. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I move for approval.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner O'Malley.
Yeah, I am supportive of those amendments. I think that it is important to identify our district's priorities. We, you know, countywide priorities are usually about, you know, big countywide public safety, those kinds of things, and those that remain the countywide priorities. But we all have our district priorities, and I think it's important that, because we get, we get, they compete with one another, and we don't want a lot of competition, especially with the larger projects, with the countywide projects. So as long as that, you know, is really clear, and that those amendments reflect that, I can certainly support this resolution. Thank you, Cam, thank you, Commissioner Bott.
Okay, any other discussion on that item? Okay, Commissioner Casada moved to approve. I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. And so Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Fiscotti.
Aye. Okay.
I just want to say, aye, I forgot to say that, aye, and approved, you know, vote for the resolution with the amendments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that passes unanimously. I see our county attorney, Ken Martinez, is his hand up.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure the record reflects, it passes as amended. I know the vice chair did make an amendment, and he did say that, just make sure the record reflects, passes with the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that language. It passed unanimously with the amendments. Amended, appended. Okay, thank you. So then, moving on to the new 9B, which is 8, the old 8N. Clay Campbell, I see you. Did you want to say something?
I do. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I am filling in for George Schroeder this evening on this agenda item. George is a project manager in our Office of Senior and Social Services. So George worked closely with two of our guests here on the call this evening, Bianca Encinas and Diana Dorn Jones from the United South Broadway and South Valley Main Street. And there was a Health and Human Services grant for millions of dollars nationwide to reach out to communities for health literacy and COVID-19 literacy in particular. So we had about two weeks in April to jointly prepare this application. And lo and behold, we found out in late June that we got to almost $2.1 million. So the county's going to be working very closely with these two community groups to do a series of community-based vaccination events and health literacy campaigns. With that, I'll stop right there, and I'll turn it over either to Bianca and/or Diana to elaborate on anything, specifics that the commission may have about where this is going to happen and what the planned activities are. So Diana or Bianca, would one of you please?
I can just start off, and then maybe Bianca can get into the details. Madam Chair, members of the commission, this new literacy initiative is intended to help local governments to enhance their health literacy efforts to reduce COVID-19, particularly among this related low-income racial disparities, low-income people of color, and populations that are more vulnerable to this particular virus. So that's really what this is intended to do. I think the feds have come to the conclusion that the large kind of venues that COVID-19 is typically offered in, those days are of the past. Now we're really getting down to the nitty-gritty. New Mexico has very good rates in terms of vaccination rates. But there are pockets within our community where there are high rates of unvaccinated people. These are people typically that are vaccine hesitant in nature. They're not people who just are totally against it. So this effort is really intended to educate folks, to tell, to try to dispel the myth, to get them to come out. And so while we'll be participating and actually holding some community events, our role is really to help enhance whatever's going on in our community. If someone else is doing an event, we want to go out there and do some canvassing and try to draw people to that event, to get as many people vaccinated that are at risk as possible. So we have a very specific work plan. As Clay just mentioned, it was quite a heavy lift to try to get this done in a short period of time, but we were committed to getting this done. These are the neighborhoods that South Valley Main Street works in anyway, the neighborhoods that United South Broadway works with. As you probably know, my thing is housing. And I know Councilor O'Malley knows that, my thing is housing. But whenever there are people at risk, I see this as a public health issue for sure. Housing is a public health issue as well, so they go hand in hand. So I'm really happy and pleased to be a part of this, and want to be accountable and transparent to make sure that we can get the work done in our communities. So Bianca, if you have something you want to add to that, that's great.
Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. My name is Bianca Encinas, and I'm the executive director of the South Valley Main Street. And yes, fortunately, we partnered with a national organization to help us to identify this grant opportunity. We were able, in a very short amount of time, to write a grant and work with multiple partners. And what this will provide is, this art, this new health literacy initiative will help local governments and help enhance their health literacy efforts to reduce COVID-19-related disparities within racial and ethnic minority populations and other vulnerable communities. We'll be focusing on working within the southeast, Southeast Heights area, so specifically International District Health Communities Coalition, the New Mexico Asian Family Center, United South Broadway Corporation, targeting the South Broadway community and the San Josez community, and Martinez Town, and then with the South Valley Main Street, which focuses on the South Valley agricultura network, along with the Ancestral Lands Project. And I think one of the most kind of new partners for us, and a very important partner for us, is the faith-based community, right? We'll be working with leadership from the faith-based community that focuses on all of Bernalillo County. So how do we come together as grassroots community organizations, as Bernalillo County, and the faith-based community to educate and inform, dispel any myths that are out there about COVID-19 vaccinations? And how do we provide more opportunities for COVID vaccinations? And I'll just end off with this. I know my son is 12 years old, and at first I was very hesitant to give him the COVID shot. And now we were in a meeting with Clay and Richard Clark the other day, and it was through this partnership that I was able to get information about the upcoming COVID vaccination opportunity at the Raymond Sanchez Community Center. So through this partnership, we'll be able to spread that information, so that folks like myself, who have a 12-year-old son, and some of the other community members that I work with, who really want to get their 12- and 13-year-olds vaccinated, because they're in school already, will be able to work on a grassroots effort with the faith-based community to ensure that all of our children, 12 years old and up, are properly vaccinated, and that all of these families are properly informed and educated. So I just want to say thank you to Clay Campbell, County Manager Julia Morgasbaca, and George Schroeder, and I think it's Kathy Court, for working with us and bringing in $2.1 million for Bernalillo County. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
And Diana, I want to thank you for calling me earlier. I thought what you had to say about this particular program was very important, that's why I pulled it off. I thought, you know, we've got a lot of folks that are listening, and, you know, that way to highlight what, you know, this is a very big deal. It's a, it's a big award from the feds, and I know that it's going to, you know, a lot of responsibility, of course, whenever you get big awards like that. I'm really glad to see that you have all these partnerships with the faith-based community, and that you're also reaching out to areas like, for example, Southeast Heights, Martinez Town, all those areas that, you know, of need. And so I want to thank you for that, and that was the reason I pulled it off, the agenda was for us to really highlight that. I think it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Barbo?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, for pulling it off of the agenda, because I do think it's important for our community to hear the work that's going on. And I can't, yeah, I want to acknowledge Ms. Encinas and Diana Dorn Jones as well. and Diana Dorn Jones as well. I can't tell you how many times this past two weeks, Diana, that I've mentioned your name as people are struggling with thinking of how to address, like, the crime and violence and drugs in our, here in southeast Albuquerque. I'm just constantly saying, they're like, thinking they're inventing new wills or new things, and I'm like, no, South, United South Broadway did this for us in the 80s and 90s, and we.
Don't age me.
I was there too. I was there too. I mean, I saw the change happen in front of my own eyes right here in my neighborhood. I know it was, you know, much to United South Broadway's work that y'all did within communities. So I just believe so much in whatever y'all are going to step forward and the plans you have are going to be beneficial to our community again. So thank you, and expect a lot of people to be reaching out, because people are really trying to come up with new ideas and going to, like, Atlanta or Denver or other. We have the experts right here. You just have to reach out to them. So you better answer the phone, too.
Don't worry, I will. Thank you so much. Again, we want to thank the staff, the county staff, for their undying support to beat that deadline, and that was just great. So thank you, Commissioner O'Malley and Barboia, and thank you to Commissioner Margasbaca for doing the work that you do and helping us support this grant through this whole process. Greatly appreciated.
Yes, and I agree. Thank you so much. And I just want to reiterate that this is federal funding. This is not county money that's being used for this COVID-19 health literacy campaign. And we have such a great relationship with South Valley Main Street. So on that, I will move to approve this item. Do I have a second? Commissioner O'Malley, seconds. And all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley. Aye. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, on to the new 9C, which is the old 8I, emergency housing vouchers. And I believe Betty Valdez is on the, in the meeting right now.
I am, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Would you like to talk a little bit about this item, please?
Sure. So the emergency housing vouchers are an invitation from HUD. We received 72 of these vouchers. There were 600 housing authorities with the almost 6,000 housing authorities throughout the nation that were invited to participate in this program or extended the invitation. There were, I believe, three housing authorities in New Mexico. There were Bernalio County Housing, San Miguel, which we both run, and the city of Albuquerque. Bernalio County was awarded the highest award for the state. We were awarded $860,000. We were required by HUD to partner with a nonprofit that issued these vouchers. They are for homeless people. We have 18 months to issue these vouchers. Our partner is the New Mexico Coalition to End Homeless. We have signed an MOU with them. And we partner with them because they take homeless throughout Bernalio County, and they take them from all walks and all homeless partners. So it's first come, first served. They use the SPADA scores, and they were the first partner we thought of that met all of the HUD criteria. They checked all the boxes. So we have started taking these applications. That's a sip of water from the fire hydrant, because we do have to push them out pretty quickly on this grant. And I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you. I didn't, thank you, Madam Chair and Ms. Valdez. I didn't actually have any questions. I just wanted that sort of information on these items. So thank you so much. It's great to hear that that's come through. And that was, that is part of HUD. HUD invited us, you're saying, not that we went and sought out, like, the previous.
Right. There were, out of the 6,000 housing authorities throughout the nation, there were 600 invitations, and we were one of the 600, yes.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for that. That was all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, and yes, thank you, Betty, for hopping on and addressing that.
No, I've been here, I just, yeah, you're welcome.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. So Commissioner Barboia, would you like to make a motion to approve this item?
Yes, thank you. I move that we approve 9A, the housing, emergency housing vouchers, FR 202172.
You're very thorough.
Seventy-four.
I think, is it 74, Madam?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. Okay, well, thank you. And who'd like to second that?
Second.
I knew it, Commissioner O'Malley. And so all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So that passes unanimously. And so on to the 9D, which was the old 8J, Bernalio County Housing Administrative Plan. Betty, would you like to talk a little bit about that, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The Housing Administrative Plan is our administrative plan for Section 8 and all of the programs that fall under that that are funded by federal funding. I'm updating the plan to include all of the new COVID guidelines and regulations that came out during the COVID period. That includes virtual inspections, all of the emails and scanning, all of the tools and all of the practices that we put in place during COVID. But we're required by regulation to document these practices that we started utilizing. We're also going to use some of them moving forward, like the virtual inspections. We believe some of those we can utilize in the future. So we've made them part of our regulation, part of our policies and procedures. So they are now in our administrative plan, and it is part of the HUD regulation that we document those, that we take them to our board, which are you, and that we make them part of our public record. So they will be put on our website. So this is ratifying this public process so that we can publish them. So I am looking for approval, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions, Commissioner Barboia?
So this is just to approve the construction of a plan, and then we will see the plan?
The plan should be with your minutes. It's about a 3,000-page plan, and it should have been attached routing with the minutes, because it is quite lengthy. And if you want to have some good bedtime reading, have at it. Because it's all code of federal regulation. So it's all in there, and it's our roadmap for what we do day-to-day. But I am required, if I change any kind of policy or procedure within the agency, to take it to you. So if I change that I'm leaving the doors open till 5:00 on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I have to take that to you to be approved. So if I change any wording in that policy or procedure, I'm required by regulation to get it approved. So we did change things during COVID, such as we're doing inspections virtually. So I cannot change that. HUD gave us some leeway to say, change it because you're in a pandemic, and get it done. But they did require me to come back to you and say, I'm changing this, and that was one of them. I'm changing the inspections. I took things by email. I didn't see them in person. So those are the things that we changed with some of these COVID practices. But I am required to bring that back to you, give it a change. There's nothing in there that was earth-shattering that I would highlight for you, that I would say, pay attention to this section. It's something way out of the norm. Everything in there that we did during the COVID practices was just required to do day-to-day business, to stay functioning. There's nothing in there outside of that that I would bring your attention to, to say, pay attention to this section. Everything just required us to keep functioning.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair and Ms. Valdez. Again, I appreciate that and just even recognizing the lessons you learn in the process and how others might take those as well. Thank you again.
You're welcome, Chair and Commissioner.
Okay.
I can approve.
Okay, so Commissioner Barboia moves to approve. I will just go ahead and second that. Thank you very much, Betty Valdez. All in favor, raise your hand. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Moving on to the new 9E, which was the old 8K, Housing Single Site Multi-Family Housing Project. Betty Valdez.
Me again. Madam Chair, Commissioners. So this is an $8 million that we came before commission. I want to say probably a year and a half ago that we are now asking, it was in the nonprofit, we are asking that we move back into the county. And the reason for this is an advice from legal that we were, we had it in the nonprofit with the understanding that we were not going to be charged for property taxes. After visiting with legal and some outside legal on some of these items, we did find that we might have to pay taxes in the nonprofit and that it would be better if we moved this property over and up, or we're going to operate it under the nonprofit, but we're going to build it and move the property into the county. So we're moving the property over to the county. We're going to purchase it under the county, and you're going to see later, we approved it on the agenda. That's the purchase agreement that you approved. So we're moving the money back into the county. We're going to purchase it under the county. And Ken, I might need your help here a little bit. We're going to purchase it under the county. We're going to do the construction under the county. It's going to help us save on some of those property taxes. I'm allowed to use the on-call architects. It'll help with some of that maneuvering of the county, some of the things we don't have yet set up in the nonprofit. So it'll help us maneuver some of that, get it built. We're already working on that piece. So on the heels of this, I'm probably going to be back in front of you with some of that construction. It's a single site, as you know, for mentally ill veterans and behavioral health. Some of our community members, which you were talking about earlier, there will not be services on-site, and we can get into that at the next commission meeting. But this is strictly for the movement of that $8 million money so we can get the construction done and the purchase of the property. So it went from the nonprofit back into the county, and that's what it's for. And I don't know, Ken, if you can add anything to that and help me out here, as I'm probably quickly drowning.
Yeah, Betty, thank you. I heard you reference some of the legal aspects of this. Ken, can you clarify some of this?
Of course, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. And Betty's really laid it out perfectly, and I want to thank her for being so nimble and working with us. We've done a lot of very cutting-edge stuff by creating the Bernalio County Housing and the Bernalio County Housing nonprofit. There's emerging law with regard to that, and Betty has it right. There's actually litigation not directly involving us but in other areas with the assessor and other items, talking about what is taxable property in a nonprofit versus taxable property to a government. We went forward and Fisabaca Sandoval really helped great with this, as well as Mr. Breonis, and we hired two more experts. So we really have a great team with Betty. So we have a housing authority lawyer expert of El Paso, which is fantastic, licensed both in Texas and New Mexico. And we also have a HUD lawyer specialist out of Washington, right, Betty? I think Washington DC. So HUD itself is just enough to work with it. You have to be very careful. We also worked with Don Counsel and everyone else on it. But the best idea is that the footprint for the project should belong to the county, and then going towards the sky, the vertical portion of it should belong to the nonprofit, which is the new model to do it. So we're going to that model, avoid the issue of property taxes and having kind of a better working relationship between Bernalio County Housing and a Bernalio County Housing nonprofit. And I can ask any other questions, but Betty got it all exactly right.
Okay, thanks a lot. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm not sure exactly who this question is for. Maybe Ms. Valdez or Ms. Martinez or maybe County Manager Margasbaca. But I understand this was approved before my time. But are there any renderings that you all have created that you could look at? I appreciate the financial analysis form, but just curious about, you know, what it might look like.
I can answer that, if it's okay, Chair. Chair and Commissioner Benson, yes, I can email you some renderings. And actually, I can email them out again to everybody, because it's been such a long time, and it's really a neat plan. We're kind of revisiting it because of the cost of construction and the time that has passed. So we're having to revisit the renderings and the drawings and the layout. But I will send out, I can send that out again to everybody, if that's okay with you, Chair and Julie. If that works for everybody, I will get that back down. Enrico, I can send that out through you if you'd like.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing no questions, would someone like to move to approve this item? Thank you, Commissioner Barboia. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, raise your hand. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboia.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Mr. O'Malley. Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. And so that passes unanimously. Moving on, we have nothing under approvals. And under discussion, we have the Behavioral Health Services update. However, because this meeting is going rather long, we will defer that. And if that's okay with Margarita Chavez Sanchez. I see she's smiling and giving a thumbs up. So we will defer that update. And so the biggest section is coming up, the announcement of our next meetings. There's going to be a lot of them. This Thursday, August 19, 2021, the ARPA Funding Work Session at 10:00 a.m. These are all Zoom meetings. Monday, August 23, ARPA Funding Work Session Continuation, 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, a week from today, August 24, 2021, Special Administrative Meeting at 4:00 p.m. to appoint a new representative to House District 19. Then next week, Wednesday, August 25, we have a zoning meeting starting at 3:00 p.m. And last but certainly not least, Tuesday, August 31, 2021, is our next administrative meeting at 5:00 p.m. These are all by Zoom. And so if there is no other business, this meeting. Madam Commissioner O'Malley.
Just real quickly, and we've got the workshop coming up on Thursday for ARPA funding. I know that the staff has identified projects within our districts. If Elias. If, alias Julie or whoever, to, we could get a list of those before the workshop. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, I am preparing something. We'll have something out into, excuse me, in the mail to you tomorrow.
I appreciate that, Shirley. Thank you.
To give you a time to review it, the presentation and some details on the projects that are being proposed.
Okay.
So any other questions or comments about anything coming up? Shall we adjourn this meeting? Yes, we shall.